Ladies and gentlemen, it's the top of the hour. We like to get started on time, so if you would rise if you're able, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Welcome to this special session of the Board of Directors of the Rec Centers of Sun City. My name is Tom Foster. I'm the President of the 2025 Board of Directors. This meeting is audio and video recorded by the RCSC management and staff and is also being livestreamed. Please take out your cell phones and electronic devices and check them to ensure they're in a silent mode. As a reminder, we do not tolerate verbal or physical abuse towards any member, any guest, visitor, or employee, and violators may be asked to leave the meeting. Now, I'd like to introduce our timekeeper and our management personnel that are here tonight. Our timekeeper will be Director Brissette, here to my right. From the management team is Rebecca Hill, our general manager. Yes, lots of applause. And Mike Dearmeyer, who is our Director of Operations, that will be watching the screen for any livestream comments. I would also like to recognize Alan Kleinhans and Carly Young and Miguel Jackson, who are our audio and visual engineers. And then, of course, thank the Sundial staff for setting up the room for us and for bingo tomorrow. You know, if I don't mark this on my sheet, I always forget to introduce Marcia, who is our board coordinator and the person who keeps this place running. So, thank you, Marcia.
You would think if she puts the scripts together, she put her name down.
Well, you'd think she'd put it right at the top and in larger font, but it's not. All right. Our first item of business is a roll call of the voting members by Secretary Kice. Would you proceed, Secretary Kice?
Director Brissette. Here. Director Collins.
Here.
Director Gray.
Here.
Director Mapes.
Here.
Director Ruff.
Present.
Treasurer Borski.
Here.
I am here. Vice President Nederseim.
I am here.
Lost her voice, but she's here.
She's here! And President Foster.
I am present.
Mr. President, please have a quorum. A little bit quieter than normal.
All right, thank you. All right, I hope, I'm sure Marcia's picked up those sheets, but I hope you signed in for any motion that you wish to speak to. And then, if you're watching on the livestream, if you would indicate in the margin there so that Mr. Dearmeyer will know what motions you would like to speak to on the livestream, and we will try not to forget you when we get to those individual motions. All right. Director Gray, did you want to make a statement to begin with?
Yes. Before we do the special rules, one of the things I wanted to say, and I would have hoped that there were a lot more people here, but maybe they're watching on the screen. We had Chairman Kice, who was now our secretary, but he was the chairman of our working group. And we put in, the working group, and we have several of them here, put in hundreds of hours over the time as we've gone through this. But over and above all of that, our chairman also took all those revisions and went back home and then put them all together in formatting. And we did that multiple times. And then, I also want to say something because we've had somebody come up and actually indict us to our face that we're corrupt. That particular person has had several recommended recommendations. And even after that indictment was made, our chairman, Secretary Kice, just listened, took it in. He said, "Well, we could probably work with that." There was nothing in his, there was no, "I'm going to get," even with you, I mean, the quality of his character, and that's one of the things for me that I've been impressed with with this board, is the quality of people and the character that they present. And I know Preston won't say anything about that. Our working group knows about it because they've seen what he's done. But I just think, for me, integrity is a huge thing. And when I see that level of integrity, where he's more concerned about getting the bylaws correct, and if somebody puts in a good recommendation, that he will take it regardless of how he's been treated by them, I think that deserves recognition. And so, I just want to thank him for serving his chair, for all the work you've done, and then, again, going over and beyond to make sure that every recommendation was heard and considered for the good of the community.
All right. Can we move forward, please? Director Gray, would you like to proceed with the special rules for tonight's meeting?
Yes, yes, Mr. President. I move for adoption of the special rules for procedure of discussion and voting on the bylaw revisions. The Rule One, discussion of the proposed bylaw revisions will proceed with the Definitions section and then Article by Article ad surreatum. Members must sign up and speak on the specific proposed bylaw revision they wish to speak to. The board member making the motion regarding a specific proposed bylaw revision will be permitted to speak first. Members who sign up to speak on proposed bylaw revisions will speak next, followed by discussion by the board members. Rule Two, when a specific bylaw revision is active, members who signed up to speak on that specific proposed bylaw revision will be given three minutes to make their comments regarding that specific motion. Rule Three, during the board's discussion of any specific proposed bylaw revision, a motion to amend a proposed bylaw revision may only be made by board members. Rule Four, if a member has signed up to speak on a specific proposed bylaw revision, and that bylaw revision is proposed to be amended, the member will be given an opportunity to speak on the proposed amendment to that proposed bylaw revision. Members will be given two minutes to make their comments. Three, excuse me, three minutes. We've updated. Rule Five, no board member shall speak any more than once to a proposed bylaw revision or more than once to any given proposed amendment to the proposed bylaw revision, and shall speak no longer than two minutes. This time limit also applies to the maker of a proposed amendment to a proposed bylaw revision. Rule Six, the chair of the bylaw working group may speak to each proposed bylaw revision and any proposed amendments thereto without a time limit. Rule Seven, all discussion on proposed bylaw revision or an amendment thereto shall be germane to the issue at hand and not dilatory. Rule Eight, when discussion is complete on each specific proposed bylaw revision, the board will vote to either accept or reject the specific bylaw revision.
Thank you, sir. I believe we were going to use three minutes on each of those, so...
Board members get three, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So, I need a second for Director Gray's motion for the special rules. Thank you, seconded by Treasurer Borski. This motion to adopt special rules and therefore only the board may speak to this proposed motion. Is there any discussion by the board? Seeing none, the motion before you is to adopt special rules of procedure for discussion and adoption of the revised bylaws. Secretary Kice, would you please take the roll call vote?
Director Brissette.
Yes.
Director Collins.
Yes.
Director Gray.
Yes.
Director Mapes.
Yes.
Director Ruff.
Yes.
Treasurer Borski.
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Nederseim.
Yes.
President Foster.
Yes.
With a vote of nine yes votes and zero no votes, the motion is adopted.
Thank you. All right, just before we dive into these, just one reminder that under the current bylaws that we're working through, every time we take a vote on one of those, a simple majority is all that's required at this time. And we will proceed with each set of the bylaws as Director Gray was outlining in the special rules and vote on them independently, one by one. All right. Secretary Kice, would you make your first motion?
I move to amend the section titled Definitions of the current Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated corporate bylaws to the section titled Definitions of the proposed RCSC bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group.
I will need a second.
I'll second.
Director Collins is seconded. Director Kice, as maker of the motion, do you wish to speak first for its adoption?
Yes, I do. The most impactful recommended changes to the Definitions area and really much of the bylaws have to do with updating them to match changes to the Arizona Nonprofit Corporation Act, or ANCA. Over the years, changes were made to our bylaws without ensuring that they kept pace with changes to the ANCA. The working group was in constant contact with a nonprofit bylaws attorney to make sure the document we have today is in line with the laws of the state of Arizona. We are also recommending to separate the incident report into two areas so that we have one for medical issues and one to limit the incident report only to issues with behavior. In the definitions, we've also tried to better define that owners must be living on the property and on the deed, but also provide protection for surviving spouses so they aren't hit with new PIF and SIF fees if only the person that passed away was on the deed. We also move the definitions for types of petitions here and better define the rights for privileged cardholders.
All right. Ms. Johnson, would you please read the names of the members who have signed up to speak on this motion?
John Fast.
Hello, my name is John Fast. My member number is 153253. And under those special rules, I can understand if you rule me out of order. I am speaking against this action and encouraging us to do the right thing by tabling the motions to amend the bylaws until the annual membership meeting in March of 2026, when the most RCS members are physically present. We desperately need to show that this board is truly transparent by using a membership meeting as a forum for gaining consensus that these changes are the right thing for the membership. The bylaws revision committee has worked hard to craft these revisions. They deserve to be considered by the entire membership. Tonight, by my guess, there are less than 20 people here. At the town halls combined, there were less than 100 members present. For something as important as the bylaws, I can guarantee you there will be a much larger turnout at the or a membership meeting. I personally have had trouble, troubled by the board's constant tinkering with the bylaws, including when I was a member of the board. Over the past several years, several hundred amendments have been proposed. Imagine the time consumed in making several hundred amendments. In preparation for this meeting, a colleague of mine researched the bylaws back to 1975 and discovered what I had always suspected. The original intent of the bylaws was only to allow amendments to the bylaws at membership meetings. And if there were a conflict between what the majority, if a quorum was present and there was a conflict, and a majority of members disagreed with the board, then the members would rule. That makes perfect sense to me when I read our document, but it's gone through 50 years of tinkering. I think this was the safeguard against runaway boards, and I'm not saying this is a runaway board, and also limited the ability of the board from excess tinkering. The 1975 boards were, uh, boards. Bylaws were 10 pages long. For now, let's do the right thing and table the motion so it can be presented at the annual membership meeting where it belongs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Mr. President, everyone who signed up to speak on this motion has spoken.
Mr. Dearmeyer, anyone on the livestream? Thank you. Comments from the board? Secretary Kice.
Yeah. I can understand your concerns with this, John. There is a risk involved. As you know, there have been several times in our past where we haven't been able to get a quorum at a membership meeting. And we had town halls, we've got this one. We've had a lot of opportunities for members. And again, we don't have anything close to it. So, I think there's a real risk in waiting till the membership meeting. If we don't get a quorum, what do we do then? So, I don't think that that's a good idea because the members have all sorts of opportunities. Yeah, and I agree with you. There's been a lot of tinkering over the years. That's one of the reasons why we had to make changes because there's been tinkering without a lot of looking and seeing how the ANCA has changed in the last 50 years. We don't like to, in some ways, go back to 1975. I could actually run then. But we can't, and the world has changed. The ANCA has changed. The idea that only member motions take precedence doesn't agree with the laws of the state of Arizona, and we have to follow those. So, you know, although I'm sensitive to what you're saying, I think there's risk involved, and we've done our best as a working group to make sure that we're in line with the laws of the state of Arizona, and that's what we need to do.
Director Collins.
Yes, and we can also have livestream now, which we didn't have before. So, now anybody, no matter where they are in the world, can be here in this meeting if they want to be. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I would add just one comment here, and you have to start the timer on me, too. The board may amend the bylaws. That's always been part of the bylaw structure. And it was true that under certain circumstances, if there was a conflict between the board and the members, the member vote would rule. But that is specifically limited to, under the ANCA, should write that acronym down, to just those issues that do not deal with the business affairs of the organization. And that's kind of the issue we ran into at the last membership meeting. And I would like to see us continue forward with these because it is with these revised bylaws that we can successfully move forward with membership meetings in the future. All right. Anyone else on the board?
Do you want to give them another chance to respond or not?
No, he gets his two minutes or three minutes.
Okay.
Okay. So, no one else on the board wishes to comment? All right. The motion before you on behalf of the bylaws working group is to amend the bylaw section entitled Definitions. Secretary Kice, would you please take the roll call vote?
Director Brissette.
Yes.
Director Gray.
Yes.
Director Ruff.
Yes.
Director Mapes.
Yes.
Director Collins.
Yes.
Treasurer Borski.
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Nederseim.
Yes.
President Foster.
Yes.
Mr. President, with nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion is adopted in its first reading.
Thank you. Next item of business is a motion to approve proposed bylaw revisions on Article One, titled Corporate Office. Secretary Kice, would you please read your motion?
Oh, yeah, the motion first. I move to amend Article One, titled Corporate Office, of the current Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated corporate bylaws to Article One, titled Corporate Office of the proposed RCSC bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group.
I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Gray. Secretary Kice, as maker of the motion, do you wish to speak first for its adoption?
Yes, I do. The main recommended changes to Article One are to specify the precedence for how we will govern meetings as an organization, and also to allow non-financial and budgeting issues to carry over from December to the next calendar year, which we're not allowed to do at this time, in order to avoid having to waive second readings of the motion in December. Other than that, there are no other, as far as I can see, significant changes to Article One.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, would you please read the names of members who have signed up to speak on this motion?
Mr. President, no one signed up to speak on this motion.
Mr. Dearmeyer, anyone on the livestream? None? Or the motion, okay, anyone of the board wish to speak? Seeing none, the motion before you on behalf of the bylaws working group is to amend Article One, titled Corporate Office. Secretary Kice, would you please take the roll call vote?
Director Brissette.
Yes.
Director Collins.
Yes.
Director Gray.
Yes.
Director Mapes.
Yes.
Director Ruff.
Yes.
Treasurer Borski.
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Nederseim.
Yes.
President Foster.
Yes.
Can she just wave or raise her hand to say yes?
She tried.
Mr. President, with nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion is adopted in its first reading.
Thank you. Next item of business is a motion to approve proposed bylaw revision on Article Two, titled Membership, Cardholders, and Guests. Secretary Kice, will you please read your motion?
I move to amend Article Two, titled Membership, Cardholders, and Guests of the current Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated corporate bylaws to Article Two, titled Membership, Cardholders, and Guests of the proposed RCSC bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Director Mapes, seconded. Ms. Johnson, oops, excuse me. Secretary Kice, as maker of the motion, would you wish to speak first?
Not surprisingly, I do. The most noticeable recommended change to Article Two is to remove the 75-mile residence rule for members. We kept that a member has to occupy the property and added that it must be on Maricopa County's tax rolls as other than a rental or non-resident property. The working group's thoughts on this was that a person who lives in the house and pays their assessment should be able to use RCSC facilities, whether they have another house in Peoria or South Dakota. We also gave more description of how medical and incident forms should be used.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, would you please read the names of members who have signed up to speak on this motion?
Pamela Brecher. Is this better? There we go. Good evening. Pam Brecher, member, card number 173180. I was at last Monday's meeting, and I'm speaking to the motion that was dismissed to get a second card for single dwellers. So, I know that's not on there. I sent an email to the board, but I never got a response, so I wasn't sure that that was received. So, I do, per what you said, I brought it typed up for you in an order to keep things, because there's no way I can get that out in three minutes. But I would like you to look at it again because you keep referencing a state law, but I haven't seen what that state law is, so I've been unable to look that up and see what it says. I think that if you look at doing per property, it's the same. You're giving two cards per property. And I think that there's a way to do it to say that if there's a single deed holder that they get, call it whatever you want, a member plus card. And in order to use that member plus card, the member must always be there. So, I addressed specifically the concerns I heard at the bylaws meeting and some other ones that I heard. So, instead of getting into all of those, I would like to just respectfully give you my letter typed up and let you read that at another time. Is that all right? All right.
It's fine. Anyone else, Marcia?
Betty Bishop. Betty Bishop, 140308. I was also at the last Monday's meeting, and there were a lot of people who spoke about giving single-deed people that guest card. And one person said, "It's not fair because my wife and I don't get a guest card, but we don't get two cards. And it's not like we're going to be using that guest card every single day or even every week. And if you don't think it's fair that you have a guest card, how do you think we feel when we only get one card and pay the same price?" And so, I was hoping that people would, since there was a lot of people who were concerned about that, I was hoping that you would give more thought about it. Thank you.
Mr. President, everyone who signed up has spoken.
Mr. Dearmeyer, anyone on livestream? Okay. Board members, anyone wish to respond? Director Collins.
Just one thing. Right now, what our articles say is the corporation may levy an annual property assessment against each property and its owner or owners. Each owner of a property, by accepting a deed or entering into the facility's agreement, is deemed to covenant and agree to pay these annual property assessments. So, if you bought your house after, I believe it was 2003, in your deed, it said it's by property, not by person. So, that's why this is the way it is. It's in the articles.
Any other board members?
Yeah. You're not going to find that in the Arizona statutes because you have to go into the courts and see the Superior Court judgment that said this was a fair way to assess our properties and our membership. And just like we need to follow the ANCA, we also need to follow court orders. If the court has decided this, Superior Court has decided this, then that's guidance that we need to follow. And if not, then we run a real rest of the corporation. And as a board member, I just can't do that. I'm sorry.
Let me just add one thing here because I was, took some abuse for some statements earlier. So, I wanted to maybe correct what was intended there. It's not that this isn't a reasonable potential idea that we need to continue to perhaps consider, but the idea that I was trying to convey previously was the abuse that we were seeing, not only with punch cards, but just guests that were misbehaving. And I know there's no one here who would bring someone who was going to intentionally misbehave. But I assure you, we have incident reports of people who go to our pools and expose themselves. We have incident reports of people who go to our facilities and use language that is unbelievably bad and abusive to members and the staff. So, it's really an issue, I think, that the working group felt we need to better control how we're dealing with guests. And when we get a better policy there, then I think we can revisit this issue and see whether or not we can find a way to open it up for a single deed owner. So, I think at the moment, we're not ready to compound an issue, but it doesn't mean that that can't be revisited sometime in the future. Any other comments from the board? Any other comments from the board?
Treasurer Borski?
Yes, Pamela and Betty, this is a very complicated issue. It has a lot of financial implications, it has record-keeping implications. It's almost grows as you think about it. I won't be on the board next year, but I'm sure this board will be considering this, looking at it. And if they want to shoot me for saying that, oh, well. But, yeah, I understand your plight. I'm single, and it is an issue for many people, but it's not something we can decide in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? All right, the motion before you on behalf of the bylaws working group is to amend Article II titled Membership, Cardholders, and Guests. Secretary Kice, would you please take the roll call vote?
Director Brissette?
Yes.
Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Gray?
Yes.
Director Mapes?
Yes.
Director Ruff?
Yes.
Treasurer Borski?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Nederseim?
Yes.
President Foster?
Yes.
Sir, with nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion is adopted for its first reading.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a motion to approve proposed bylaw revision on Article III titled Assessments and Fees. Secretary Kice, would you please read the motion?
I move to amend Article III titled Assessments and Fees of the current Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated corporate bylaws to the Article III titled Assessments and Fees of the proposed RCSC bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director Gray, seconded. Secretary Kice, as maker of the motion, do you wish to speak first?
Briefly, yes. There really are no significant changes to Article III, and it remains essentially as it is in the current bylaws. The working group didn't decide that there was any, any changes that we really recommended for this.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, please read the names of members who signed up to speak on this particular motion?
Mr. President, no one signed to speak on this motion.
Mr. Dearmeyer, any live stream? None, all right? The motion before you on behalf of the bylaws working group is to amend Article III titled Assessment and Fees. Is there any discussion by the directors? Seeing none, Secretary Kice, would you please take the roll call vote?
Director Brissette?
Yes.
Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Gray?
Yes.
Director Mapes?
Yes.
Director Ruff?
Yes.
Treasurer Borski?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Nederseim?
Yes.
That's an affirmative.
President Foster?
Yes.
Mr. President, with nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion is adopted for its first reading.
Thank you, sir. The next item of business is a motion to approve proposed bylaw revisions on Article IV titled Membership Meetings. Secretary Kice, would you please read your motion?
I move to amend Article IV titled Membership Meetings of the current Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated corporate bylaws to the Article IV titled Membership Meetings of the proposed RCSC bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director Gray, seconded. Secretary Kice, as maker of the motion, do you wish to speak first for its adoption?
Yes, sir. The working group spent a lot, a lot of time on this area, really concentrating on recommending Article IV changes to our meetings and the amendment process by expanding the access members get to proposed motions prior to the vote. Currently, the only time members get to amend a motion is in the few minutes the motion is debated at the annual membership meeting. The new process provides months for members to provide feedback to motion makers to help refine their motions before they come up for a vote. Additionally, our proposal is to vote on motions for six weeks prior to the annual meeting and give a num, give a number of different opportunities and ways for members to vote, instead of only being able to vote at the membership meeting. We're also recommending expanding the annual meeting agenda to give members more information on the state of the corporation, and we better define the process for requesting a special membership meeting.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson, would you please read the names of members who have signed up to speak on this particular motion?
Mr. President, no one signed up to speak on this motion.
Thank you. No one live streaming, all right? Is there any discussion by the directors? I would just add briefly here that this is the guts of the whole process, is this article. This is what's going to give the membership opportunity to, to really have a membership meeting going forward, rather than the unfortunate circumstances that we had last year where membership motions were ruled out of order by legal fiat, basically. We, we had no alternative. So these rules that are being proposed today will give the membership a opportunity to, to voice their concerns on those issues that are proper for the membership to, to raise, and I think it will go a long ways towards having a more fruitful discussion with, between the board and the membership. Director Gray?
Thank you. I'm sorry, probably should have said something before you had started, but I would like to make a comment on that also. As, as the president said, this actually is providing the most amount of input that our community and protection for our community. They're going to be able to, as members, offer amendments, but then they will have plenty of time to actually review those, discuss those, and so when they come to a vote, if that amendment hasn't been amended and changed, they have a better understanding, they can look at unintended consequences, they can talk with the sponsor. We want to make sure that amendments aren't just thrown at our community without forethought, without looking at unintended consequences, but this gives the maximum number of our members the maximum amount of input. So when people talk about self-governance, this actually gives them the greatest amount of, of, of input. Again, protecting what, what they have the right to vote on, because there are clarifications in the business affairs of the corporation that legally, it's the board that has the responsibility for, because it's the board that holds the fiduciary responsibility for that corporation. So this is, this, this article magnifies the opportunities for our membership and gives them much more ability to have influence over, over those amendments and to discuss them and know what they're voting on. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Gray. Any other comments by the directors? Treasurer Borski?
I want to extend a huge thank you to the committee. This had to be one of the messiest ones that you were dealing with, making sure the members had all the opportunities that they could have, yet keeping the corporation running on the straight and narrow, keeping us legal, making sure amendments and amendments to amendments and changes and all the things that can possibly happen at a special, at a membership meeting, writing it down and getting it in some order. That, it's like building the Eiffel Tower. It was, it was a big process, and I thank you for it. You spent a lot of time.
Vice President Nederseim, did you wish to try to speak?
Next time.
Not tonight, all right. We'll, we'll catch you next time. Anyone else on the board? All right? Seeing none, the motion before you on behalf of the bylaws working group is to amend Article IV titled Membership Meetings. Secretary Kice, would you please take the roll call vote?
Director Brissette?
Yes.
Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Gray?
Yes.
Director Mapes?
Yes.
Director Ruff?
Yes.
Treasurer Borski?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Nederseim?
Yes.
Ooh, that's better. President Foster?
Yes.
With nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion is, has adopted it in its first reading.
Thank you, sir. Next item of business is a motion to approve proposed bylaw revisions on Article V entitled Board of Directors. Secretary Kice, would you please read your motion?
I move to amend Article V titled Board of Directors of the current Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated corporate bylaws to the Article V titled Board of Directors of the proposed RCSC bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group.
Is there a second? Vice President Nederseim has whispered second. Secretary Kice, as maker of the motion, do you wish to speak first for its adoption?
Yes, sir. For Article V, the working group is recommending to better define how directors are elected to the board and how their terms of office are filled. We want to strengthen the requirements for the board to pass bylaws amendments by requiring a two-thirds, the same two-thirds vote for bylaws amendments as is recommended for, for the members and is in line with the ANCA. We recommend changing that the general manager gets direction only from the board president, but all direction must be done after consultation with other board officers.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, would you please read the names of members who have signed up to speak on this particular motion?
Mr. President, no one signed up to speak on this motion.
Thank you. Mr. Dearmeyer? None on live stream, thank you. All right, is there any discussion by the directors? Seeing none, the motion before you on behalf of the bylaws working group is to amend Article V titled Board of Directors. Secretary Kice, would you please take the roll call vote?
Director Brissette?
Yes.
Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Gray?
Yes.
Director Mapes?
Yes.
Director Ruff?
Yes.
Treasurer Borski?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Nederseim?
Yes.
President Foster?
Yes.
Mr. President, with nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion passes its first reading.
Thank you. The next item of business is a motion to approve proposed bylaw revisions on Article VI titled Officers. Secretary Kice, would you please read your motion?
I move to amend Article VI titled Officers of the current Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated corporate bylaws to the Article VI titled Officers of the proposed RCSC bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Mapes. Secretary Kice, as maker of the motion, do you wish to speak first?
Yes, sir. There are a few recommendations for Article V. Most of them are to itemize officer responsibilities instead of having them in paragraph form, but Article, excuse me, we're on Article? VI. Let me try that again. In Article VI, I'll fix it for the next one. But we also better define how the board elects its officers and how, and how the board elects its Sun City Foundation directors.
Is that it, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson, please read the names of members who signed up to speak on this motion?
Mr. President, no one signed up to speak on this motion.
Mr. Dearmeyer? None, all right? Any discussion by the directors? Seeing none, the motion before you on behalf of the bylaws—
We need to give her one of those teleprompters, so she can type stuff in. Is she out of time for that?
What's this?
She's waiting for the time.
Expand on this, okay. So was this a situation where some of the bylaw was being moved to, or proposed to be moved to, a board policy?
I do not believe that's the case, not in, not in Article VI.
Okay.
No.
Okay, I, I believe that there is proposed a new board policy that's going to—was that not the case?
There could be.
Yes.
Yes, there is.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. All right, so no one wished to speak on that, nothing on the live stream. Was there any other discussion by directors? Seeing none, the motion before you on behalf of the bylaws working group is to amend Article VI titled Officers. Secretary Kice, please take the roll call vote.
Director Brissette?
Yes.
Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Gray?
Yes.
Director Mapes?
Yes.
Director Ruff?
Yes.
Treasurer Borski?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Nederseim?
Yes.
President Foster?
Yes.
Mr. President, with nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion passes its first reading.
Thank you. The next item of business is a motion to approve proposed bylaw revisions on Article VII titled Nomination and Appointment Procedures. Secretary Kice, would you please read your motion?
I move to amend Article VII titled Nomination and Appointment Procedures of the current Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated corporate bylaws to the Article VII titled Nomination and Appointment Procedures of the proposed RCSC bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gray. Secretary Kice, as maker of the motion, do you wish to speak first for its adoption?
Yes, just briefly. Recommended changes to Article III include improved procedures for candidates that want to apply to become board members and requirements for prospective—did I say six? It says seven here, it says seven here, I just can't read my writing. Article VII, two. Article VII.
Start over.
Recommended changes to Article VII include improved procedures for candidates that want to apply to become board members and requirements for prospective board candidates. Otherwise, there's not a lot of changes to the article.
All right, thank you. Ms. Johnson, would you please read the names of members who signed up to speak on this particular motion?
Mr. President, no one signed up to speak on this motion.
Thank you. Mr. Dearmeyer, none, all right? Is there any discussion by the directors? Seeing none, the motion before you on behalf of the bylaws working group is to amend Article VII titled Nomination and Appointment Procedures. Secretary Kice, would you please take the roll call vote?
Director Brissette?
Yes.
Director Collins? Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Gray?
Yes.
Director Mapes?
Yes.
Director Ruff?
Yes.
Treasurer Borski?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Nederseim?
Yes.
President Foster?
Yes.
Sir, with nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion passes its first reading.
Thank you. All right, the next item of business is a motion to approve proposed bylaw revisions to Article VIII titled Election of Directors. Secretary Kice, would you please read your motion?
I move to amend Article VIII titled Election of Directors of the current Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated corporate bylaws to the Article VIII titled Election of Directors of the proposed RCSC bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group.
Is there a second?
A second.
Treasurer Borski, yes, seconded. Secretary Kice, as maker of the motion, do you wish to speak first for its adoption?
The only recommended change to Article VIII—I got it right this time—is that a recalled director is not eligible to run in a recol election for their spot. Otherwise, the, there really are no significant changes to Article VIII.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, would you please read the names of members who signed up to speak on this motion?
John Fast?
I hope I've got the right motion. Is this where the 10-month rule is?
The 10-month rule?
Yeah. Qualification for candidates?
No.
It is?
Hang on, John, just a—
Okay, I will.
No, no, just hang on a second, let's verify, so you can—
Yeah.
We may have passed it, I— It's not in this section.
It was in Article VII.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry, sir, but we, we went by.
Thank you for that. Do you want to let him talk?
No, we, we went by. Okay, so— Is there anyone else, Ms. Johnson, to speak on this motion?
Mr. President, no one else signed up to speak on this motion.
All right. Nothing on the live stream? Any discussion from the directors? Seeing none, the motion before you on behalf— Seeing none, the motion before you on behalf of the bylaws working group is to amend Article Eight titled Election of Directors. Secretary Kyse, please take the roll call vote.
Director Brissette?
Yes.
Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Gray?
Yes.
Director Mapes?
Yes.
Director Ruff?
Yes.
Treasurer Borsky?
Yes.
Vice President Netasim?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Foster?
Yes.
Sir, with nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion passes its first reading.
Thank you. The next item of business is a motion to remove Article Nine titled Initiative Referendum and Removal Petitions and replace it with the amended and renamed Article Nine titled Committees of the Proposed RCSC Bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group. Secretary Kyse, would you please read your motion?
I move to remove Article Nine titled Initiative Referendum and Removal Petitions from the current Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated corporate bylaws and replace it with the amended and renamed Article Nine titled Committees of the Proposed RCSC Bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gray. Secretary Kyse, as maker of the motion, do you wish to speak first for its adoption?
Yes, sir. Most of the current Article Nine is the process to submit, recall, referendum, and removal petitions. The definitions of the different types of petitions were moved to the definition section of the bylaws, and the rest of the article is proposed to be moved to a board policy. We are also recommending that the current Article Twelve on committees is moved into this spot. Significant committee recommended changes include changing the title of co-chair to the vice chair, that committee chairs are only allowed to vote to break a tie, allowing special committees and working groups, that a committee vice chair can be a director or a member, which is decided upon by the president and the committee chair, that committees can create their own nominating process, and that committees by a two-thirds vote can remove a committee member. The only significant recommended change to committee responsibilities is that the long-range planning committee needs to look at projects five or more years in the future, except as necessary, to adjust the PIF forecast.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, would you please read the names of members who have signed up to speak on this particular motion?
Candy Rogirio?
On, all right. Member 157, 480, and good evening again. Just a disclosure, I am on the long-range planning committee, and my comments do not reflect the opinions of the committee, nor am I representing them tonight. These are my thoughts only. I was happy to see in the most recent revision where you put the five years in the future and give us a little bit of wiggle room, except as necessary to adjust the PIF forecast. I thought that was good. I don't have any comments on the amendment itself, but my concern is the big-ticket items that are on the PIF from years one to four. Unless I'm mistaken, I don't know that there's a group under BP-16 that is doing the oversight on those big-ticket items that are coming up so quickly. And my suggestion would possibly be making another standing committee for a short-term planning committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Candy.
Mr. President, everyone who signed up has spoken.
Mr. Dearmeyer? None. All right. I guess, Candy, my lone comment here would be, stay tuned. BP-16, I think, is, as it is proposed to be revised, is going to cover that situation. It's not the end of any season. It's a brand-new season with multiple opportunities now for many committees. All right.
Or, as they say on television now, the last show before the finale.
All right. I'm not sure what that meant.
I'm not either.
Okay. All right. Is there any discussion by any other director on this particular motion?
Yeah, I agree with you, Candy. The board policy 16 needs to be changed as a result of this. We're going to have to change several board policies as a result of other changes that are going on in the proposed bylaws. So that's one of the things that we're in the middle of right now, is working on proposed changes to board policies to align with this and also to update them for a number of other reasons, too. So we have town halls coming up in the future to discuss board policies, and we have special sessions coming up in the future to vote on the board policies. So there's going to be a number of changes that are required as a result of what we're doing and just what needs to be done to continue to update our community and our regulations.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, the motion before you is to remove Article Nine titled Initiative Referendum and Removal Petitions and replace it with the amended and renamed Article Nine titled Committees of the Proposed RCSC Bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group. Secretary Kyse, would you please take the roll call vote?
Director Brissette?
Yes.
Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Gray?
Yes.
Director Mapes?
Yes.
Director Ruff?
Yes.
Treasurer Borsky?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Netasim?
Yes.
President Foster?
Yes.
Sir, with nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion passes its first reading.
Thank you. The next item of business is a motion to move Article 10 and 11, 13, titled Disciplined Proceedings, and rename it as amended Article 10, titled Disciplined Proceedings. Secretary Kyse, would you please read your motion?
I move to change Article 13, titled Disciplined Proceedings, of the current Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated corporate bylaws, and rename it as the amended Article 10, titled Disciplined Proceedings, of the proposed RCSC bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Borsky. Secretary Kyse, as maker of the motion, do you wish to speak first for its adoption?
Yes, sir. Article 13 on disciplined proceedings is being recommended to move to the Article 10 spot. The working group's desire for this area is to provide more safeguards for members and RCSC staff. If the result of an incident or incidents requires a board hearing, the subject of the hearing will be provided with redacted copies of incident reports or reports that relate to the hearing. This will allow the subject of the hearing to better understand why there is a hearing and to better prepare themselves to discuss the charges. The redacted reports must be thoroughly altered to protect and safeguard the identity of persons that submitted the reports. That's essential to us. Both parties may attend the hearing if they choose, but that's their choice, and it's not a requirement. If both parties decide to attend, the commission will set up different times and dates for each person's part of the hearing in order to better protect them. If the incident report is filed against RCSC personnel, that report will go directly to Human Resources. If the commission finds no violation, all records of the specific incident that caused the hearing will be removed from RCSC files and destroyed.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, please read the names of members who have signed up to speak on this particular motion?
Lori Ellingson?
Good evening, Lori Ellingson, 133335. I have a couple of questions and things that might need to be tweaked a little bit. Section 1385, it says, "A member, privileged cardholder, or any other person must not behave in a manner which jeopardizes the rights or privileges of RCSC employees, other members, privileged cardholders, their guests, or any other person." It's a little vague. It's a little subjective. How do you define what jeopardizes the rights or privileges? Is asking a question jeopardizing somebody's rights? That's a little vague, a little subjective, and needs, when you write the policy, the board policy, there needs to be a little more clarification on that. On 1425, it says, "The board hearing commission, made up of no fewer than three directors to review evidence, determine if it has merit." So, again, what criteria are you going to use to determine if something has merit or not? And, again, if somebody just says, what time do the lights turn off on the tennis courts? How does that have merit to justify an incident report? So there's something that needs to be done about that. 1433, reported violations. There's nothing in there that talks about frivolous hearings. There's too much where somebody can say, he said, she said, or there's hearsay, and then they're going to report for a violation. 1436, the involved parties may have an assistant present. Can you define what an assistant would be? And then 1439, a redacted copy of all reports related to the reasons for the hearing. The redacted copy, you can get rid of the person's social security number, their address, their phone number, but if you take out the information of who wrote that report, that person has no idea what the incident report or why they're being called into a hearing. So you've got to maybe take that word "redacted" out. I know I'm out of time, but I do have other things that I would like to address.
If you could send them to us, Lori, that would be helpful, then. Would that be okay?
No.
Okay.
I'd prefer. And one reason why?
It's three minutes, Lori, I'm sorry. We want to keep moving this evening. I understand your concerns, and I think it's fine if you would wish to provide those to the board. And in board policies, as they're developed, we can try to address those if possible. But we want to keep moving this evening, but still give you an opportunity to express your concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because some of my concern is the fact that those concerns are never addressed.
Mr. President, everyone who signed up to speak on this motion has spoken.
Thank you. Mr. Dearmeyer? Nothing. All right. Is there any discussion by the directors? Director Collins?
Thank you. Yeah, just, Lori, you know, we've, just some of those things you said, we've dealt with directly. Issues just like that. And I think that we have dealt with them, and we have satisfied them with the people. And if there was something that wasn't right, the board will fix it. You have to have a little faith in your board to listen and to do the right thing. And I think that we do that 99% of the time. Thank you.
Others on the board? Director Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I do want to say that, and obviously, we're not going to go into particulars of things that happened in the past, but we are aware of some unfortunate things that happened in the past. And although we can't go back and change the past, a lot of what we put in here was to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future. And so, again, as Director Collins said, we have put in, and even, you know, one of the lines you said, all identifiable information, those are one of the things that raised some concerns. It wasn't just a name or address. They wanted to make sure that if somebody was going to be indicted, that there wasn't anything, any way that they could be identified. So we're trying to protect our residents on both sides of the issue as much as possible.
Thank you, sir. Second, Treasurer Borsky?
Lori, these hearings are taken very seriously, and the information is reviewed and studied and questioned and discussed and beaten to death before the hearing ever takes place. And at that hearing, we take any testimony by either party and really listen and try to do the best that we can do. Are we 100%? No, nobody is. There are people in jail for murder that they didn't do. We're just trying to protect our members, protect your identity, save you from retribution, and take care of the situation. Thank you.
Secretary Kyse?
And Lori, you're exactly correct in that much of this needs to be better fleshed out in the board policy. And that's why I asked if you could send them to us, because that can help us as we're drafting and redrafting the board policy, to hopefully put some of that stuff that you have concerns about in there. Yeah, we couldn't put, you can't put everything into the bylaws, which is why we're going to, there's going to be, there's a board policy that deals with this. But without having those inputs, it's kind of difficult for people looking and working on that to be able to make the changes you might desire.
Treasurer Borsky?
And Lori, as a second, at the next meeting, the next reading, if you want to expand on your comments, you can do that.
Just a reminder to the board members, you get one time to speak, okay? So, sorry, with our special rules, we're trying to hold everybody's feet to the fire as far as speaking times. All right.
I'm going to try really hard. Lori, I wrote everything down. Okay.
Thank you. All right. Is there anything further from the board? All right. Motion before you on behalf of the bylaws working group is to move Article 13, titled Disciplined Proceedings, and rename it as amended Article 10. Secretary Kyse, would you please take the roll call vote?
Director Brissette?
Yes.
Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Gray?
Yes.
Director Mapes?
Yes.
Treasurer Borsky?
Yes.
Director Ruff?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Netasim?
Yes.
President Foster?
Yes.
Sir, with nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion passes its first reading.
Thank you. The next item of business is a motion to move Article 10, titled Indemnification and Risk Management, and rename it as amended Article 11, titled Indemnification and Risk Management. Secretary Kyse, would you please read your motion?
I move to change Article 10, titled Indemnification and Risk Management, of the current Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated corporate bylaws, and rename it as the amended Article 11, titled Indemnification and Risk Management, of the proposed RCSC bylaws as recommended by the bylaws working group.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gray. Secretary Kyse, as maker of the motion, do you wish to speak first for its adoption?
Just very briefly, Article 10 was moved to Article 11. There really are no changes from the current bylaws in it.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, please read the names of members who signed up to speak on this particular motion.
Mr. President, no one signed up to speak on this motion.
Thank you. Mr. Dearmeyer? None live streams. Okay. Is there any discussion by the directors? Director Ruff?
If my memory serves me correct, we are putting a bunch of this stuff into a separate board policy?
No.
Has it always been just a paragraph?
That article only has about that much in the paragraph, and that's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I must be thinking of a different one.
Yeah.
All right.
That's coming up.
Are there other comments by board members? Hearing none, the motion before you is to move Article 10, titled Indemnification and Risk Management, and rename it as the amended Risk Management and rename it as the amended Article 11 titled Indemnification and Risk Management. Secretary Kice, would you please take the roll call vote?
Director Brissette?
Yes.
Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Mapes?
Yes.
Director Gray?
Yes.
Director Ruff?
Yes.
Treasurer Borsky?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Nettasim?
Yes.
President Foster?
Yes.
Sir, with nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion passes its first reading.
Thank you, sir. Next item of business is a motion to move Article 11 titled Investments and rename it as amended to Article 12 titled Investments. Secretary Kice, would you please read your motion?
I move to change Article 11 titled Investments of the current Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated corporate bylaws and rename it as the amended Article 12 titled Investments of the proposed RCSC bylaws as recommended by the Bylaws Working Group.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Ruff. Secretary Kice, as maker of the motion, do you wish to speak first for its adoption?
Yes, sir. Article 11 is recommended to move to Article 12, and nearly all of it is recommended to be moved to a board policy. The working group did recommend adding different buckets of money that the RCSC uses to help members better understand where their money goes and what it is used for.
All right, thank you. Ms. Johnson, would you please read the names of members who signed up to speak on this particular motion?
Mr. President, no one signed up to speak on this motion.
Mr. Deere Meyer? None online. All right. Is there any discussion by the directors? Seeing none, the motion before you on behalf of the Bylaws Working Group is to move Article 11 titled Investments and rename it as amended Article 12 titled Investments. Secretary Kice, would you please take the roll call vote?
Director Brissette?
Yes.
Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Gray?
Yes.
Director Mapes?
Yes.
Director Ruff?
Yes.
Treasurer Borsky?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Nettasim?
Yes.
Director, President Foster?
Yes.
Sir, with nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion passes its first reading.
Thank you. All right. The next item of business is a motion to adopt a new Article 13 titled Severability. Secretary Kice, would you please read your motion?
I move to adopt a new Article 13 titled Severability of the proposed Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated bylaws as recommended by the Bylaws Working Group.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gray. Secretary Kice, as maker of the motion, do you wish to speak first for its adoption?
Yes, sir. Article 13, as we said, is a new recommendation. What a severability clause does, it protects the RCSC in case one of the areas of the bylaws is found invalid by court order or something of that sort. Then severability allows that area to be removed and reconstructed, but the rest of the bylaws remain as valid. So the severability is a big protection area for us in case something happens, something gets thrown out. Not all the rest of the bylaws are invalid at that point.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, would you please read the names of members who have signed up to speak on this motion?
Mr. President, no one signed up to speak on this motion.
Thank you. Mr. Deere Meyer? Thank you. Is there any discussion by the directors? Seeing none, the motion before you on behalf of the Bylaws Working Group is to adopt a new Article 13 titled Severability. Secretary Kice, would you please take the roll call vote?
Director Brissette?
Yes.
Director Collins?
Yes.
Director Gray?
Yes.
Director Mapes?
Yes.
Director Ruff?
Yes.
Treasurer Borsky?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Nettasim?
Yes.
President Foster?
Yes.
Sir, with nine in favor and zero opposed, the motion passes its first reading.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Thank you for coming and participating. The next meeting of the Board of Directors will be, ta-da, tomorrow. At 9:00 a.m. right here in this room, and set up the same way it is right now. I don't think we're going to change it overnight. And then the next exchange will be November 10 at 9:00 a.m., again, right here in this room. And our annual meeting that we are going to be looking forward to under the use of these new bylaws will be, hopefully, on March 10, 2026, at 6:00 p.m. right here in this Sundial Auditorium. There being no further business and without objection, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.
This is a copyright written production of the Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated and is intended for the sole purpose of informing our Recreation Center members. Any duplication, copying, transmission, broadcast, or use including electronic and social media is strictly prohibited without the prior written consent from the Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated. Thank you for watching.